We'll call our January 17th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have our O call, please?
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
For present one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Chris McMichael, pastor of In Grafted Word Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag.
Father, we thank you for our great city. We thank you for the wisdom of God upon our council members to make decisions that honor you and prosper our community. We thank you, Father, for peace tonight, peace in our city, and peace as this community continues to grow. We thank you, Father, for allowing us to live here, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Chris. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor, we have no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under four A, consider appointment to the Historic Zoning Commission. Currently a vacancy on the Historic Zoning Commission due to the death of Ms. Julia Woodford. And she was first appointed to the commission in 2007 and reappointed for a five-year term. So we have Ms. Susan Vandergriff that has been contacted, and she is, lives in the newly, she's a resident of the newly established East 8th Street Historic District. So I would make that as a motion to appoint Susan Vandergriff for that term.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Also, I want to take just a second, this isn't on the agenda, but I want to take a moment to do this. Received a very nice letter, which I had shared on social media, was shared with our council and staff. But I just wanted to take a second to read this. It was a recognition of some of our employees, specifically Joey Poston with Leisure Services, K-9 Officers Byrd and Mentor, and then Officers Lee and Cook with the Police Department. And, you know, there's so much negativity in the world, often directed at police and other things. I wanted to read this, because this is pretty special, and I think it's very indicative of our community. It says, "Mayor Shelton, I just wanted to take a moment to let you know about an incredibly touching and honorable thing Joey Poston of Leisure Services did for my family yesterday. Me, my husband, and my six-year-old special needs son were on our way home from an appointment at Vanderbilt Children's Hospital yesterday morning, when we were involved in a motor vehicle accident at the intersection of Buffalo Valley and Jackson. As a result of the crash, airbags were deployed, and my horn was running until the police could disconnect the battery. Loud noises such as fire alarms or car horns are a trigger for my son, and he was crying and screaming in full meltdown mode after the accident. I was stunned, and my arm was killing me, and my husband was busy dealing with the police and owner of the other car. Joey saw my distressed son, scooped him up, and took him to his truck where it was quieter, and proceeded to chat with him and calm him down. He entertained my son for a good hour, no easy task under the best of circumstances, when I have no doubt he was supposed to be at work. My husband and I are so indebted to this man, I sincerely hope he does not get docked for the time he took to help a family that desperately needed him, and he won't. If the rest of the Cookeville City employees are as good as this man, then I know the city I moved to in 2015 from Denver, Colorado, is being well taken care of." I also want to note that the Cookeville Police were top-notch also. The K-9 unit was the first on the scene, because they were close by, and they helped Joey entertain my son. The little blue dog they gave him was a hit and was quickly become a treasure possession. I would be deeply grateful if you would share this with upcoming city council meeting and with the head of police and Leisure Services. We live in a day and age where good deeds frequently go unnoticed, and this man deserves as many kudos as he can get. Sincerely, Karen Bryan and Asia Wilmeth and baby brother Fatius, even though he wasn't in the van." Are the Wilmeths here tonight? Okay, I sent them an invitation as well. But, anyway, I just want to personally say thank you to Joey and those officers, and I know the rest of the council may want to say something too, but we certainly appreciate your representation and showing love and compassion for our city.
I just want to thank you guys for stepping up the plate and taking care of business. That's what we expect out of the employees, and you guys did a good job. Thank you.
Any else? All right. Good deal. Okay. Under O Business 5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January 3rd, 2019. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 5B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O 181131, amendment to the future land use concept plan of the Cookeville 2030 Plan to depict an area located along East 10th Street from Highway 111 West to North Old Kentucky Road as being appropriate for commercial development. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this depicts the area being considered, and as noted at first reading, the planning commission had approved and certified to the council amendments to the development plan element of the 2030 Plan. And this is the future land use concept map that's a part of the development plan. As previously noted, the amendments were initiated at the request of Titan Development, and it's specifically so that the property identified on this map could be depicted as best for commercial development instead of the current residential development. The planning commission specifically recommended that the development plan be amended to create a new future land use classification called Commercial Plan, and to depict this area on the screen as best used for Commercial Plan development. On first reading, the council, however, revised the amendment as recommended by the planning commission so that the eastern portion of the subject property remained depicted as being appropriate for lower-density residential use. This is an aerial view of the site, a drone view of it. And this reflects the recommendation as amended by the council on first reading. It removes the area to the east, it's on the floodplain. And here is the floodplain shown, so you can see what was removed. And this is the actual future land use concept map from the plan as amended. The planning department recommends for the council's adoption of the amendments as amended by the council on first reading.
Thank you. Oh, so this item and the next three is the second and final reading and not a public hearing. A public hearing was held at the Planning Commission in November, and a public hearing was held two weeks ago with the council. In the four and a half years I've served as mayor, we've had a total of 147 formal public hearings on a multitude of issues for the city, and they all utilize the exact same process, public comments only at the first reading hearing, and no comments on the second and final reading. Therefore, this item will be treated just like the 147 previous, and will be no public comments. The council will discuss and vote on the business portion of this item. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion among the council or questions?
I'd like to just say something real quick. I mean, this revolving the future land use concept plan, you know, part of that process, we heard this for the first reading, this is my third meeting on it, after being on the Planning Commission and seeing it. You know, even this past week, we're still, we're looking at it. You know, we studied the, I went back and studied maps, all the way going back to 1898 of Cookeville, and you can find that resource on the USGIS website for historical maps. 10th Street has always been a main road, it was one of the few roads in 1898, and it always grew first in Cookeville, all the way up until the 1970s. 111 put an exit there and was developed nearby. You know, as far as future land use goes, with it being near a four-lane highway, it being a major artery for Cookeville, listed on the major plan, this is something that is historical, it goes back, it carries forward. That's something that wasn't talked about previously, and, you know, we've always felt like 10th Street needs some work and needs some development, but I do think that this future land use definitely, and what follows meets that requirement, and meets commercial requirement as well in that area near 111, for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 5C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O 181232, rezoning a portion of 1545 East 10th Street from RS10 Single Family Residential to PCD Plan Commercial Development. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the general location of the property being considered, more detailed map of the property. The property is identified as a portion of parcel 55 on tax map 41. The entire tract consists of 33 acres. The portion proposed for rezoning consists of slightly more than 15 acres. An aerial view of the same site. Here's the current zoning, and you can see on the map what zones the property is contiguous with. It's also located adjacent to the Billbury Park subdivision to the south, and then Darwin Parks to the north. The council on first reading established the following restrictions and requirements. Here's the actual site plan that goes with this PCD, preliminary PCD plan. And then this is a drone shot. And these are the restrictions or requirements that were established by the council on first reading, which shall be depicted and indicated upon the final PCD plan when submitted to the Cookeville Planning Commission if the rezoning is approved. The first is that decorative aluminum or black-coated chain link fencing shall be provided between the development and Billbury Park subdivision and around any detention pond. Noise barriers consisting of berm, fencing, or machinery-style walls shall be provided along the southeast and southwest corners of the development adjacent to Billbury Park. Evergreen trees used as screening between the development and Billbury Park shall be a minimum of 10 feet in height at the time of planting. Signage shall be restricted to a monument style with a maximum height of 12 feet, with the exception of one sign along the eastern boundary near Highway 111, where a pole sign not exceeding 25 feet in height may be located. Billboards, nightclubs, and tattoo parlors shall be prohibited on or in the development. Lighting for the development shall be downward-facing and shall be dark skies compliant, and deliveries shall be limited to, shall be prohibited between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Also, utilization of pervious concrete pavers or stormwater, for stormwater shall be evaluated. In addition, the council also stipulated on first reading that an agreement to cost-share improvements to East 10th Street with developers must be approved by the council as a condition for the rezoning to become effective. If the rezoning is enacted, a final PCD plan and a preliminary subdivision plan must be submitted to and approved by the Planning Commission. This is improvements to 10th Street that are covered in the aforementioned agreement. And this is the preliminary PCD plan, and as I know, they must come back if this is a rezon, with a final PCD plan. The final PCD plan must be submitted and approved within 18 months after the effective date of the enactment of the PC district by the city council. Approval of the final PCD plan and preliminary plan is required before construction can begin. The final PCD plan has to conform with the preliminary PCD plan, and must include all the conditions established by the council for rezoning. It also must include the building and site, building plans including height and bulk of all buildings, elevations, floor plans, the final drafts of all covenants, and including, and also requirements for stormwater. Also, the developers must submit a schedule indicating when each phase of the development is to begin and be completed. And as noted, the planning commission has recommended for approval of the rezoning, and that was subject to the future land use concept plan being amended, which the council did in the previous item. And the planning department recommends for the adoption of the rezoning as approved with the conditions established by the council on first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion among the council or questions? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 5D, consider on second and final reading ordinance O 181233, rezoning 111 Chestnut Avenue from RD Single Family and Duplex Residential to CL Local Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the property being considered for rezoning, picked it on the screen. A detailed view of it, and actual current zoning. The proposed rezoning was approved by the planning commission, as recommended by the planning department, and we've had no comments since first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 5E, consider on second and final reading ordinance O 181234, abandoning and declaring a surplus property available for acquisition by the adjoining property owner outside portion of the western right-of-way of Polly Drive. Mr. Mills.
Mayor of this and council, this is the location of the right-of-way of Polly Drive that we're asking you to consider abandoning and declaring a surplus. There's a photograph of it, and then a detailed survey of it. As noted, the planning commission approved this, and recommended that you do this, and the purpose here, as I mentioned at first reading, is that hopefully we can complete an exchange of this right-of-way with the owners of the adjacent property for additional right-of-way of West Jackson Street, which we will need as part of the intersection improvements at West Jackson and Willow. The planning department also recommends for approval, and we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
And a second? Motion is second. We'd like to speak to the motion. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under consent agenda 6A, consider awarding bids for transformers and conductors for the electric department. Do we have a motion and a consent agenda?
Still moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under new business 7A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a cost-share agreement with Titan Development for road improvements to East 10th Street as required by ordinance O 181232. Mr. Davidson.
Mayor and council members, as Mr. Mills pointed out, one of the conditions placed on the rezoning of East 10th Street was a cost-share agreement to be approved by council, and that cost-share agreement to be with Titan Development. So myself, the Public Works Department, our Planning Department, the city attorney, have spent several days working with representatives from Titan Development to develop an appropriate cost-share agreement for both parties to see if we can't get some needed improvements done, a Phase 1, so to speak, on 10th Street. Just to try to point out, what we are presenting to you tonight for your consideration is essentially five lanes on East 10th Street, which would consist now, if these improvements are done, would be two westbound lanes, two eastbound through lanes, one turn lane, a dedicated eastbound right turn lane onto Old Kentucky Road, an additional dedicated eastbound right turn lane into the proposed development, would be sidewalks on both sides of the road with curb gutter and storm sewers, and also a traffic signal at Doris Drive. The improvements would essentially start from Chocolate Drive to somewhere 200 to 300 feet west of Wilson Avenue. What we've asked Titan Development to do on behalf of these road improvements at their expense is to deed sufficient right-of-way to the city along the south side of East 10th Street, east of Old Kentucky Road for the additional eastbound lanes. That's the additional eastbound through lane, as well as the additional, that dedicated right turn lane into their development. They would provide the stamped engineering plans and specifications for all the improvements along East 10th Street within this first phase of these, of this improvement to 10th Street, including the stormwater plans. They would provide the right-of-way plans and the exhibits, so we can acquire the necessary right-of-way on the north side of 10th Street. They would provide the traffic control plan, as we all know, that's an extremely busy street, and when construction starts out there, we need to make sure we can do everything we can to keep traffic flowing as best we can while the construction's underway. They'll also pay the expenses to relocate as necessary, the utilities along the south side of East 10th Street, east of Old Kentucky Road, anything related to their development, they'll relocate those utilities at their expense. They'll also perform all the grade work for the entire roadway, the typical section up to and including the subgrade stage. That's for all the travel lanes, the turn lanes, the curb gutter, storm sewer, and the sidewalks. They'll do that grading for this, for this project. They will pay for all the materials needed to install the traffic signal at Doris Drive, and the city forces, our traffic division will actually install the signal, but they will pay for the materials needed to install that traffic signal. They will install the curb gutter and storm sewer along the south side of the, of East 10th Street adjacent to their development. They'll also install the topsoil seeding along the south side of East 10th Street adjacent to their development. And then this, they'll also reimburse the city for materials costs for the base stone and asphalt for the new dedicated right turn lane that will serve their development. They'll reimburse the city, because that's one of the obligations that we have, is the base stone and asphalt. But they'll reimburse us for that section, for that dedicated right turn lane. They'll also provide the construction surveying for all work performed, to be performed by Titan Development, and they'll provide, at a minimum, the two benchmark controls in the field, along with the CAD drawings of all engineering plans for the road improvements. And then the city, once grading is complete, the city will install the base stone and asphalt on all of the travel lanes, turn lanes. We'll install curb gutter, storm sewer, sidewalks, topsoil seeding along the north side of East 10th Street, and we'll relocate. There's some utilities on the north side of 10th, as well as some utilities west of Old Kentucky Road, on the south side of Old Kentucky. That'll have to be relocated, and the city will take the steps necessary to see that those utilities are relocated. We'll also, at Old Kentucky Road, the traffic signal that is there, that'll have to be modified some, and that'll be at the city's expense as well. And again, pointing out that the city will actually install the signal at Doris Drive, but the materials to be provided by Titan Development. The agreement can't be assigned to any other party without prior written approval of the city of Cookeville. The certificate of occupancy will not be issued for the shopping center until the provisions of the road improvements are met. If the agreement, for some reason, is terminated, the property at East 10th Street and Old Kentucky Road, because this is a condition of the rezoning, it would revert back to RS10, and we would come back to you with an ordinance to repeal the rezoning if that were to occur. And Titan Development will cause their contractor to provide an irrevocable letter of credit or a payment and performance bond in a form and amount approved by the city for the obligations that they have, or have agreed to for these road improvements. I think that's about it. I think I've covered the majority of the items in that agreement. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion or questions?
Yes. We need to reflect in the motion that this agreement fulfills the condition of the rezoning ordinance, as long as it's not terminated, because that's what this does, is fulfill this last condition on page two of the rezoning ordinance. So the motion will need to, should include that, so we don't have to deal with that.
Make sure that happens, Kathy. Make sure, make that as part of the motion. That's a part of your motion, she'll just record it as that, okay? All right. Any comments or questions from the council on anything?
I think this is a
Councilman Miller?
Extremely fair and equitable solution on both sides. I want to thank the developers and Mike for sitting down and hammering out this agreement.
Yes, sir.
I've got a few things to say. I think, I think that this was a kind of a key piece of the puzzle here. I don't, I don't necessarily think that all developments have to enter into a cost-share agreement to get developed, but I think one of the things that we heard most from the very beginning is the traffic on 10th, and the city's ability to do something in the short term in that area. And the biggest concern was, you know, what is our ability to get over there and make improvements, and the practicality for getting things done in that area to help the residents and to help that part of the community, and help the city as a whole. I do think that this development will benefit the community and those residents, and this cost-sharing program is an example of that working together. And so, that entire development was a big part of that process, and that this is a big part of the process of getting that development done. I think it's kind of unique, you know, the planned commercial district, but this is an area where there are a lot of communities that have been established since, for some time now. And when that happens, it's important to take the residents' concerns and really move on top of them. So I think we've done a good job with that, and that's, and I approve this.
Any other comments?
I think this is the first step in five-laning 10th Street. It's going to be a very expensive proposition, and the fact that we can get the developer to help the city of Cookeville with that first step is a, is a good thing for both parties. There are problems with the location because of stormwater, and I think that if something can be done as far as restraining the water from the five-laning, that will help, and then also the possibility of pervious surfaces on the shopping center development. So I think this is just a first step toward helping go from an F during rush hour to maybe a C or a D.
Very good. All right. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. All right. 7B, consider resolution R 190101, expressing appreciation for service rendered to the city of Cookeville by Tony Peak Electric Department Director.
Bless you.
Bless you, Lindsay. So we have a, have a resolution that we want to honor our friend Tony Peak with, and I'm going to read that for everyone to hear, and then he may want to come up and share some words of wisdom in a minute that he didn't know I was going to ask him if he wanted to. Whereas, beginning his illustrious career with the Cookeville Electric Department as electric coordinator in 1974, Tony Peak embarked upon a journey of public service that would span over 44 years. And whereas, building on his extensive knowledge of power generation from his former service in the United States Army Power Generation Division, Tony transitioned to and served in the capacity of engineering and operations supervisor in 1981, ultimately being named Department Director of Cookeville Electric in 1988. And whereas, Tony Peak's distinguished service is notable as only the fourth director of the department, following in his predecessor's footsteps of dedication and loyalty to the city of Cookeville, engaging with the 10 city council boards during his career to move the department forward where it stands today, providing exceptional service to the citizens of Cookeville along the way. And whereas, that exceptional service includes managing the positive growth the city has seen over the years, paving the way for innovative services and partnerships, including the accomplishments of the Highlands Business Park Solar Array, updating and expanding local substations, as well as building relationships with TVA, MTIDA, and other regional organizations to provide sustainable energy services along with economic development. And whereas, Tony has built a reputation of public and community service over his tenure, serving on numerous boards and commissions, earning and maintaining the respect and admiration of his peers in the public and private sector. His most notable achievement include president of Tennessee Municipal Electric Power Association, Middle Tennessee Industrial Development Association Board of Directors, Tennessee Valley Authority, and Tennessee Valley Public Power Association Committees, as well as leadership put in the Board of Directors and membership in the Rotary Club. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the employees and city council, sincere appreciation is hereby extended to Tony Peak for his valuable service to the city, citizens, and upper Cumberland region. Now therefore, be it resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office 17th day of January 2019. Tony, congratulations, sir.
Mayor, council, I am both honored and humbled by your resolution tonight. As I stand here, I try to think of a way to describe to you how much I appreciate all the opportunities the city has afforded me and my family through the years, especially allowing me to be your electric director beginning in 1988. Just all the support you've given me, the trust you've placed in me, just blows me away. You know, when I think about retirement, and I have been for about a year now, and I always think about, what am I going to miss most? And I always come back to the relationships that I've developed over the last 40 years, and certainly the last 30 years, as your director. And I'm not sure how easy that's going to be to walk away from that. You guys, mayor, council, previous mayors and councils and city managers, city attorneys, my fellow directors, city employees, electric employees, gosh, I remember back to Alan Ray and 30 years ago, offering me the electric department job, and it's somewhat, I thought about it somewhat like a dog chasing its tail, you know? You think that's, everything's going really good, then when the dog catches its tail, it wonders what it's going to do. And that's sort of the way I was in 1988, after getting the electric department director job. But I had read a quote, and I thought, maybe this will work, maybe I can be successful as a director. And the quote was a real simple little quote, and it was basically, surround yourself with people that are smarter than you. And I think I've done that really well, and And I think I've done that really well, and I'll end by saying, I couldn't have dreamed of a better place, breaking up here, couldn't think of a better place to have worked, lived, and raised a family than Cookeville, Tennessee. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
This is going to age, age me a little bit, but you were the director of the electric department when I was four years old. So that's, the longevity and the service to our city is much appreciated.
Councilman Walker?
Mr. Peak, I think, you know, we've only been here a short time, that, you know, myself on the council, and you're, you're an example, I think, for all the employees of the city of, of leadership and, and where you, things can go. You're definitely an example to me. I've, I've appreciated you in just the few months that I've been here. You know, it is that leadership that we're going to miss, you know, and I think that your service to our community is something that, that even I'll strive to, to use as an example in my future. And I think that that's something that's very important that all members of the community can really appreciate. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman?
Yes. The city of Cookeville has had an electric department since 1903, and there have only been four directors. And that says something right there for what goes on around here. And, and Tony's tenure has just been a very good thing for the people of Cookeville. We really appreciate him. We wish him well in his retirement, and we're always here to see him when he comes back for a visit. Thank you.
I've had the honor of being, working with Tony for 12 and a half years now. Definitely some words that come to mind, he's a man of integrity, a humble leader, leads by example, you know, steadfast, you never have to worry about, I mean, if he's bringing something to us, absolutely know it's needed. One thing I'm going to miss, I'm going to ask you to record, because I always have fun when you, when we're ordering luminaires, so I need you to record that for me, and we'll play that anytime that we're ordering luminaires for our city. But I really appreciate you, appreciate your leadership, and just thankful for you, man. One other surprise that made me not be surprised, since you know they're here, but we have Lynn Huff Stettler, the TVA Customer Service Manager, and Jimmy Allen, the Middle Tennessee General Manager of TVA, and they're here, and they, they want to say a couple things. So come on up, gentlemen.
You weren't lying while you, Tony? So good evening. Like Mayor Shelton said, my name is Lynn Huff Stettler, and I have the pleasure of serving as TVA's Customer Service Manager, working directly with the electric department here at Cookeville. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for providing me the opportunity to honor and congratulate Tony on his upcoming retirement. From the beginning, TVA was built on the foundation of local control and partnerships, what we refer to as a public power model. People coming together with a common purpose to serve others. Where these partnerships are strong, great progress is made. Under Tony's leadership, the electric department and TVA have fostered a strong partnership. This partnership has manifested itself in unprecedented growth for the city. I'll share with you just a small piece of this story. Just over the last four years, over 2,400 jobs either created or obtained, and over 4,100 million, or $41 million invested in the local economy, and that's just by manufacturing alone. Providing reliable electricity is a key factor in attracting new businesses, and Tony, and throughout Tony's career, he and his team have answered this call. Over the years, I've gotten to know Tony as a colleague and as a friend. Tonight, I can say without a doubt that Tony has represented the city of Cookeville with the highest of character, integrity, and provided excellent service to this community. As Tony turns his chapter in life, I want to thank him for being a great partner and congratulate him on a job well done.
And Tony, would you mind coming on up?
You're going to lose that fishing trip I brought.
So it's with great pleasure that I present to Tony the TVA Board of Directors Award, presented to Tony Peak for 44 years of service at Cookeville Electric Department. Your outstanding contributions and excellent service are deeply appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right. 7C, consider resolution R, I'm sorry, well, let's, we'll officially, we'll officially adopt that. So do we have a motion on Tony? Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider resolution R-190102, authorizing participation by the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, and Sourcewell, formerly known as National Joint Powers Alliance. Ms. Emel?
Mayor and council members, the state of Tennessee allows municipal governments to utilize purchasing cooperatives as a resource to procure necessary equipment, supplies, and services. Purchasing cooperative can save us time, effort, and money. The resolution before you this evening will allow us to participate in a cooperative called Sourcewell, formerly known, as the mayor had said, NJPA. It was created by Minnesota Statue, and this cooperative has been around for over 40 years. They use a national competitive process to solicit, evaluate, and award contracts for goods and services. All documentation, including the RFPs, and the contracts are easily accessible through their website. However, and this is an important fact, the city is still responsible to ensure that every purchase we make, whether through a cooperative or not, it complies with the state and our internal city purchasing procedures. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? All vote?
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider approval of agreement with Dr. Menderata for lease of public parking on First and Oak Street. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, as we all know, our west side, downtown, is, is busy as ever, and it's, it's booming, it's expanding, and one of the things that we desperately need, especially north of the railroad tracks, is public parking. The city continues to look for property in that area. Hopefully one day we'll be able to find some that fits within the city's budget. But in the meantime, Dr. Menderata is constructing a medical office complex at 115 North Hickory. When she'd met with the planning department, I sat in on that meeting, and I, and I wondered if there was a way to work out an arrangement where the city could use one of those parking lots that will support her medical office, if we could use that for public parking, somewhat similar to what we did with First Baptist Church and the property that we leased with them for public parking. And she was open to the idea, so we worked, myself, the planning department, and the city attorney with Dr. Menderata, to try to develop an agreement where we could utilize those, a, a portion of her parking. And so what this agreement does will allow the city to, for public parking, have 36 parking spaces located at the, at the corner of First Street and Oak Street. The spaces would be available in the evenings, Monday through Friday, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and then on the weekends, starting Friday night through Monday morning, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. She's open, her office complex is open on many of the holidays, so they're closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas Day, so it would be available to the public on those holidays as well. We'll install signage and wayfinding for the public to be able to get, locate that parking lot, and the, and the public will know it's available, available to public parking during those specified times. As part of this arrangement, there's some overhead utility lines that run down an alley behind her property or between her property that the alley is, and we're, we, the electric departments agreed to relocate those overhead utility lines, move those, make those underground. Also, there's a two-inch water line on Hickory Avenue that needs to be upgraded. The water department was willing to do that, move that to a six-inch line. And the lease is for an initial 15 years. After the initial term, if both parties agree, we can renew it. Should the lease, for any reason, be terminated prior to the 15 years, the city would be reimbursed for our cost, electric department cost, water department for the expenses to relocate those lines and upgrade that water line. City's obligation, if some potholes were to form in that parking lot, we'll repair those, those potholes. But again, it's an opportunity to, to try to get some additional parking for the public to use, and I would recommend your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second?
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
I'm excited about this. When we go, my wife and I go to the west side on a busy night, like there's no parking, you have to park on the streets, you're parking illegally sometimes, so it's good that we have to, we get to add, add some more parking there, so.
I need to read you your rights tonight. I need to read you your rights tonight.
Strike those comments from the record, please. We were going to also check about to see if we can do some parallel, or, yeah, on-street parking as well, right?
We will.
See if we can add that in.
First and Oak both have wide right of ways, so maybe we can get some parallel parking added there as well.
Added on the street. Okay, very good. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just think that parking downtown is a critical need for the city, and, and this is kind of a first step at
Yep.
Buying us some time towards that.
It is. All right. All vote?
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. 7E, consider awarding bid for the 2019 Denton Avenue Sewer Line Replacement Project. Ronnie Kelly?
Mayor and council, we placed three small water line projects, sewer line projects that we had on the north part of Cookeville. One of them's on Denton Avenue, Washington Avenue by 16th Street, and we placed those projects out to bid. John T. Hall Construction was the low bidder, $235,506.50, and we'd recommend the low bidder meeting specs.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end for any citizens that would like to speak or address the council on non-agenda items, things that were not on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to say anything to the council? Council members, anybody have anything?
I would like to, I have one thing. You know, during that process of, of one of the agenda items, there was some talk about things being completed and decided on prior to these meetings and prior to our discussions, and, and I just kind of want to take the time to, to go over that process in, in short. And, and, you know, we, when we look at rezoning or any kind of issue, we start at the planning department. The planning commission takes that up for study during that time. That's public, that's public knowledge. That happens at the planning meeting, which is a public meeting. That's often written on in, in public news publications. And after that, there's a planning work session to discuss it, that's followed up by a planning meeting. And, you know, we move from there, that goes on, we make a decision on that, and that goes on to the city council. You know, there's, there's months of process during all this, which it is public information. And, you know, one of the things I do encourage the public to do is, is to stay in tune with what's going on in their city. I think it's important for everybody to stay close to their community and stay close to their members, helping to, to drive that community in a good direction. And so, one thing I noticed was we got a lot of our comments and, and things at the very, very end of this process, and I just really want to encourage people to come early so that, and to look at it two different ways, you know, look at it as yes and no, but at the same time, you know, what are, what does this do to me, and try to understand it as you go through that process. So I think that that's very important. I know that everybody works very hard here and puts a lot of time in, and I appreciate that, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I'm thankful to be back with you. Sorry I missed the, the last meeting, but appreciate all the, the prayers, calls, texts, meals, whatnot, and, and glad to be back. So we are adjourned.